He's got a mouth.
That's good. We spent all day shoveling.
Oh, yeah.
Moving on up.
We're trying something different.
It's only taken like three years of coaching. Finally decided to get out of his comfort zone.
Kelly, are you good?
I don't.
My daughters came from Iowa and they had fun driving through Minnesota. And up in Old Town.
I do like I do.
And after a good stretch.
You're good at it.
Driving forty-five.
About that email right away.
Yep.
Okay, we will call to order the December meeting of the Stark County Commission. Today is December second, it is nine o'clock, we will start with the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, we will start by the ratifying the agenda, any additions, deletions?
I guess I would like to have a discussion on the possibility of a special meeting to discuss property taxes, maybe Karen could do a property tax one oh one and explain mills and everything and explain the way the audit came in from nineteen or twenty nineteen was the audit that came out in twenty twenty. Most of us were not here, we've decreased the mills, we've, I guess, just to explain, okay, so when it comes to the legal stuff, I'm not legal, we have a state's attorney we turn to, when it comes to the budgeting, we have our auditor that we turn to that has the knowledge. You know, when people come to me with questions, I have a basic knowledge of the way things probably work, but I don't have the knowledge of how to explain it. So I just think if we could do that, I know you're going to be presenting it, I guess I'll just, I'll discuss it more when we get to this discussion.
Yeah, I think we can discuss it at the same time we talk about the legislative and the, yep.
There you go.
Okay, any other?
I'd make a motion, Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
With Bernie's condition to the legislative committee invitation.
Can I get a second?
A second.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, motion carries. Minutes, you have before you the minutes of our November fourth meeting. Any corrections? Hearing none, I would look for a motion to approve.
Make a motion to approve.
By Commissioner White, do a second.
Second.
By Commissioner Claris, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, motion carries. Accounts payable.
I have one question on the accounts payable on page fifteen, bottom of page fifteen, top of page sixteen. I don't know, is there two kiosses?
November's and December's, that twenty-four seven kiosk.
Correct.
Yes, it's two months worth of bills, just the timing thing and that, there's two months worth of.
Okay. I'm making a motion to approve accounts payable.
By Commissioner White. Do a second.
I'll second.
By Commissioner Franchuk, roll call vote. Commissioner White.
Aye.
Commissioner Franchuk.
Aye.
Commissioner Claris.
Aye.
Commissioner Marsh.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Years of service recognition. So I'd like to present to Commissioner Marsh five years of a certificate for five years of loyal and dedicated service to Stark County. So congratulations.
Thank you. I have one here, certificate of recognition to Commissioner Neil Messer for five years of loyal and dedicated service to Stark County. Congratulations.
All right. Park Board Commission items, we have a couple of financial bills we need to approve. So the first one was the weed, yeah, I can't find it.
That is on the payables.
Okay.
Just while I was listening to your meeting, you had a change order that did not receive before the meeting. So that would have to be added to the accounts.
Is the bill that was received in those as well?
Yes, that.
So we have a change order for electrical on the stalling barn for, I believe, forty-seven thousand four hundred eighty dollars? If that's correct.
Eight hundred and forty dollars, forty-seven, eight forty.
Forty-seven, eight forty.
Okay, I'd make that motion to add that as well.
Approve that change order.
Yes.
Okay, by Commissioner White, can I get a second?
I'll second that.
By Commissioner Claris, any other discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote, Commissioner White.
Aye.
Commissioner Claris.
Aye.
Commissioner Franchuk.
Aye.
Commissioner Marsh.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion approved. Sheriff's report, Sheriff Lee.
Chairman Commissioners, I should have received my report yesterday, I'll certainly stand for any questions on that. I just want to touch on a couple of things, the, we did interview for the open truck rig position with the county road department. Todd Miller, Joetta, Eldon, and Jesse, was it? Yeah, I don't remember either. We're on that board, Sergeant John Hiltonan was ultimately selected as the next truck rig deputy. So he will begin that position after the new year at some point. Obviously, that means we have a position open in the sheriff's department, which you guys did approve, we'll get that posted today after I get with Joetta and look at the job description here. One thing I guess I did want to bring to your attention is we did meet, have our task force board meeting yesterday, which is obviously comprised of law enforcement agencies from the southwest part of North Dakota here, as well as the BCI and their staff. It has been brought to our attention that obviously with the southern border being fairly well secured now, they are expecting quite a bit of movement across the northern border, which of course affects us greatly. Anywhere that's extremely rural, they're expecting quite a bit of traffic, Canada's apparently not cooperating very well, so they're expecting to see obviously these roads that are not of port used to smuggle narcotics and firearms and other items, as well as abandoned farmsteads and things like that to be used in the distribution of these items. So definitely brings a new world and a new aspect to what we're doing, so we have that to look forward to, which is nice, so. Any questions?
Any questions for Sheriff Lee? Thank you. Next item is, right back at you, the Back the Blue Grant Distribution.
All right, this is funds obviously from the state, so I need approval from the commission on how we chose to distribute that. Obviously with the elimination of differential pay for the patrol staff, we went with an increased amount for those that are working patrol. And then the rest was distributed amongst the department evenly after that amount. The, this had been changed three times, so they initially gave us an amount, the state did, I got with Lana on that, then they changed it. I got with Lana again, and then they changed it a third time, so that's, should be the final numbers and the final amount. Went from forty-one thousand something to thirty-nine thousand something in the end, so if I can get approval on that, and we will get that distributed in the December nineteenth checks, appreciate it.
Any questions on that?
It's one time allowance only?
Correct.
I'll make the motion to approve the thirty-nine thousand nine hundred thirty-four dollars and seventy-four cents for the Back the Blue.
By Commissioner Franchuk, do we have a second?
I'll second.
By Commissioner Marsh. Any other discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote, Commissioner Franchuk.
Aye.
Commissioner Marsh.
Aye.
Commissioner White.
Aye.
Commissioner Claris.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carried, thank you. Okay, we'll move into County Road and Park, Mr. Miller.
Morning, everyone, Todd Miller, Road Superintendent. Just going to go over to some of the things that we were doing prior to our nice snow event that we had. So we had gravel operations, that's all completed for this year, scoria operations, we're in swing of things here over in Bellfield as prior to the snow event, and also tree clearing and removal operations were going on with county forces clearing trees that were in the right of way, that were causing safety issues or snow problems, getting them all taken care of. We still got some out there that we still got to do, which we could probably do later on, once this is, our snow removal operation should be completed after today. Hopefully we can get the, there's some concerns about Highway ten and being icy and South Heart Road, it's a challenge. It was one of those deals, it's, what do you call it, a perfect storm for.
Icy roads.
For icy roads with rain and then plus the ground was warm and then snow compacted on top and and it's been a challenge for us trying to get it off. Hopefully this will, with the warm weather, it'll break, we'll be able to get that cleared away, I got some blades out there right now trying to cut it. And so we'll see how that goes. Other than that, I got a request or want to request to you guys or mention to you guys for next year for weed mowing, I'd like to add a minimum width of cutting of seven feet, because most sickle mowers, if people use sickle mowers yet, are seven feet to seven, 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 nine feet, so we thought we would do a minimum of seven feet. Currently, we don't have a minimum width, so you could actually go out there and cut it with a lawnmower, one cut, and still, you know.
And this is to update the policy?
Just update it, um, so I don't know if I need a motion on that, I know we had talked about it, Amanda.
Yeah, you can, that's fine, it's just.
Just an advertised?
Yeah, so two week, whatever date that you decide, like I said in the statute, it has to all be off by, or cut by October first, I think, and so we have to publish a couple of weeks prior before that, so you just have to set a reminder to make sure that gets published.
And that's in North Dakota century code, that deadline and all that.
I would question, is seven feet necessary? I mean, what's the, what's, what's necessary?
I would say minimum of seven feet would be necessary, the reason being, I mean, I get it, there's going to be places where they can't cut it because of the straight drop on the ditches, but just get it cut off. It creates, where there ever, where there's not, no weeds that aren't cut, or even you can see it by a mailbox, you're going to have a snow drift. And that causes extra time to drive out there and knock it off, this prevents a lot of that.
Only reason I ask is like, you know, seven foot piece of equipment, I mean, some people have sickle mowers, some people do.
Right.
Versus, we usually have a deck mower of some sort that they'll use, seven feet is pretty large deck mower.
Okay. I'm, I'm open to whatever you guys suggest on that, but.
All's got a self-propelled walk behind?
I have a six foot, I have a six foot deck mower. I mean, if you want to go minimum of six is fine too, I just thought seven, we were just looking at sickle mowers that used to be.
I'm one of the lucky ones that has a six footer, I mean, most people have, you know, probably even less than that.
Yeah.
Well, now we're talking about.
Maybe a two round pass that, you know.
Yeah, like you said, if it's too steep, you can't do it, but.
Right.
But if it's too steep, you're not going to have a problem with the snow building up there anyway.
Right, exactly.
Have you had much as far as people not getting it done this year?
Yeah, this year probably, I think it's like six or eight, and they'll be getting billed.
At county rate?
County rate.
Yeah.
Five hundred dollars a mile.
Per mile.
Per mile.
Per month?
Mile.
Mile.
That's what I thought you said, per mile, yeah.
Yeah, not per month.
Terrible deal, actually.
Good deal.
That's not a terrible deal. I might just, yeah.
So you have a quarter of a mile, it's.
Yeah.
That's hundred twenty-five bucks. Yeah, and, and I, I think the seven feet is, is fine, I mean.
I mean, I'm not going to go out and measure and tape measure, but at least there's a minimum width.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, before it's like you could cut it with a lawnmower, which is only two feet, a foot.
That'll help with snow dress for sure.
And then we'd have to go out and cut it anyway, so.
Yeah, with your snow, if you're cutting with your regular lawnmower, you're just beating the blades up anyway, because there's always so much gravel in there.
Yeah. So are you fine with seven or six, or I don't?
I'd be more fine with six.
Okay, that's, that's fine with me.
But we need a motion, we need to have some standard, I think the idea here is, we need a standard.
Some minimum standard.
Make the motion then.
Okay.
I guess I would make the motion to a six foot minimum width.
Great.
A second, by Commissioner White, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, motion carries, next.
Thank you Commissioners for that, um, next thing is on request for approval on a new gravel scoria shale exploration and purchase agreements. Had Amanda go through this, and we came up with rewriting, well, we didn't have an agreement for exploration, so like if we wanted to go into some landowner's land and either excavate or drill to look for gravel, I'd like to have that agreement in place, because I've been burned a few times where we checked for gravel and they went to somebody else and sold it, and we did all that work for nothing. So under the exploration agreement, you have that in front of you, or did you get copies?
Yep.
Okay, I just need a motion to approve that exploration agreement, and.
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead.
I was just saying, that's essentially, essentially an exploration and a right of first refusal, so if we go in and explore, then we get the right of first refusal to buy that gravel or shale. And then that'll be followed up with a purchase agreement and right of way, I just thought they were better to be separated out.
So I'll make the motion to approve the purchase agreement right of way.
I'd second that proposal.
Yep.
Second or second or whatever, I think it's a great idea that you have that protection.
So just one quick question, I know it's been an issue in the past, is you mine the gravel, you pay the royalty, and then there's, the gravel is stored on that property.
Correct.
And the way this is written, it looks like it is no end date to that storage?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
Is that an issue other than the couple of phone calls that, that I've had?
No.
Okay.
The only issue is like, say if we were to bring scoria into a gravel pit, that would be the issue.
Yep, and do you compensate for that, or you?
I would resolve that by contacting, contacting them before we actually do that.
Okay, any other questions? Hearing none, all in favor of the purchase agreement and right of way agreement, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, motion carries, thank you.
You should probably.
I, I guess I was going to ask, it's the same thing you're going to talk about, is I think you need separate motions for exploration as well.
I don't see it in the packet, the exploration agreement.
I don't either.
Right.
I missed.
Oh, maybe we missed it.
So I have the purchase agreement.
Right.
Okay, I have the.
I'm missing the exploration.
Yeah.
Yes. I have one in front of me, is that not good enough? I mean.
So the purchase, the purchase and right of way agreement actually sets forth the terms of the actual purchase.
This is exploration separate?
It's an exploration agreement that allows Stark County to come and explore, test, drill, excavate, and then gives Count, Stark County the right of first refusal to buy that, so that they're not excavating or drilling, and then they're going somewhere else to sell the gravel or material.
So you set, before you drill, you set the price of what you're going to pay for the gravel in the event you actually found some?
Correct.
Okay.
Good deal.
Man, did you have it on your computer, could you email it to them so they can read it over real quick?
I like it.
Oh, I missed that.
Looks good.
Are there different classes of gravel or that would classify for a difference?
Well, it's class fifteen.
But I mean, do you pay more?
Class five.
Is there a difference in compensation?
Nah, it can be, depending on where it's located. Oil fields have driven prices up.
Yeah.
A lot of counties have a set price of a maximum of royalty. Most of them that I've done research about are at three fifty for gravel, and we're kind of averaging at about four eighty-eight overall, because we have some that are lower and some that are very high. Going forward, I guess I know neighbors to the north, I think they have a six dollar on.
I think this is good for both parties involved here, you know, your stand before you put the bit in the ground.
Yep.
So I'll also make the motion to approve the exploration agreement.
Okay, I have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
By Commissioner Claris, any other discussion? Give Commissioner Franchuk a second here.
And the only other thing that we're going to be doing different too is once the pile is, before the pile is stockpiled or made or crushed, we're going to drone flight that area where they're going to put the pile, and then once that pile is completed, then we'll have a drone flight again, and that, and that's been upon our agreement between the engineering firm and the crushing firm that's doing all our work. And that way that we can make it more fair for the crushing firm and then also for the landowner as well, to make sure that we got a correct measurement.
You're talking reclamation, or you're talking the pile for the?
Pile for, for a royalty payment.
Oh, yeah.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, um, I have something new, I don't know if I can bring that up today, but I've been requesting about.
Let's prove the exploration agreement.
Oh, I thought you did that already, sorry.
Motion, we have a second.
Getting ahead of the game here.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Post, same sign, motion carries, now you can go.
Okay, I did look up some temporary construction easement and permanent construction easement, uh, right of way payments, the minimum for like, oh, there is three hundred dollars for temporary construction, we, we are at like six hundred right now for temporary construction. And then you can go at the, whatever, you can go as high as you want on those, or even same with the permanent, that's negotiated, so that's what the DOT does. Okay, moving forward, I got some, couple of projects that we did, the rest of the projects, I think, engineering firms that are represented here today will talk about the rest. Emergency management, sheriff's department and the road department helped with unloading a semi truck load of food for the amen food pantry. We took our forklift over and everything went well, it was good to see all, both, all these entities working together as one. And then Lakeview Park has completed construction for the season, and thanks to the Dickinson Parks and Rec employees for the installation of that equipment, and maybe that was discussed in Parks Board meeting, I don't know that, but I wasn't here, so. That's all I have, and, oh yeah, and then Northern Plains Engineering won't be here today, so I'll touch base on that a little bit. Project is complete over there on Thirty-third and Hundred and Tenth, and we did do the surfacing on that, and we got that done before the snow flew. All right, that's it.
Any questions for Mr. Miller? Thank you.
All right, thanks.
Okay, we'll move into road engineer reports, Mr. Krebs.
Hi, good morning.
Morning.
Good morning. We can start out with our roundabout projects, so we've been working with the landowners and right of way negotiations, the remaining landowner, they did agree to sign the documents a few weeks ago, and then we're still waiting on those signed documents back. We did, I did turn in the right of way documents for the two landowners that did sign, since we're kind of all in agreement now, and then they were delivered to the county for payment and then recording of that permanent easement. We did update the draft environmental document and submitted it back to the DOT for review, and then we're working on plan preparations for that project. On the Thirty-Eighth Street structure replacement, so that project construction's completed, progressive estimate four has been approved. I think we got most of the paperwork we need now from Schwartz, so we're finishing up the project final, and then we'll be submitting that to the DOT for review. Our West Broadway Street overlay, that construction's completed, Northern, they did provide prices for a chip seal to add that as well, so I sent that to the DOT to get approval on for the SRF funding, and I'm still waiting on their response for that. So we'll be, I'm just finishing up the project final documents for the paving portion while we're waiting. And then the Thirtieth Street structure placement project, we're working on the hydraulics, and then the, and the design, the projects plan to be bid this spring for twenty twenty-six construction. And then our chip seal, that's also for next year construction, so we'll be working on the environmental document and get going on the plan preparation for that. Are there any questions?
Any questions for Andrew?
Just so the commission knows, under the, if you, I, I put the transmittal letter in there for what Andrew's talking about with the roundabout rail documents part, and then I put what you would need to approve. This was not included in your accounts payable, the dollar amount and the person that it would go to for this. Excuse me, this is for temporary construction easement, and then we have one for a temporary and a permanent construction easement. So those two dollar amounts will need to be.
Do they have to be, do we need them separately or just as a whole?
I mean, you're, you're welcome to do them as a, as one motion if you would like.
Yeah.
And then once we get that other landowners back, then we'll get them sent into the county too.
So these amounts have been agreed to by these two parties?
Yep. Yes. Yep, the landowners agreed, and then we had some back and forth with meetings in the past with Commissioner Messer and White on the, because we had lower offers, and then they came back and we needed to up them based on the location of the property, and then that's zoned industrial over there too on the south side, so they're, they're worth more than just regular farmland.
So the total compensation due between these two signed is twenty-two thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars?
No.
No, actually, seventy-four, seventy-four hundred more than that.
Obviously, the land on the north side of the highway ten is way more expensive.
Oh, everybody knows where you live.
So the CL, the CL Thomas is getting just the temporary construction easement, and that's seventy-four hundred. And then we have the Taylors, they have two. They have a permanent and a temporary construction easement, and theirs is gonna be twenty-two thousand, three fifty.
And we still have two more easements or one more?
One more.
One more coming.
Okay. So I'll make the, make the motion to approve the twenty-nine thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars.
Motion by Commissioner White. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right, Commissioner Franchuck, any other discussion or questions? Hearing none, roll call vote. Commissioner White.
Aye.
Commissioner Franchuck.
Aye.
Commissioner Claris.
Aye.
Commissioner Marsh.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carried. Anything else? Thank you.
Nope, that's all I have. You, Andrew. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Schrank, Highlands Engineering.
Good morning, Commissioners. Andrew Schrank with Highlands Engineering, four projects to update you on today. The first one you've seen in the past, this is a low water crossing project in three different locations. We were originally hoping to get federal funding for this, but we heard last year with some of the DOT budget constraints, they weren't funding as many of these bridge replacement projects. So all they were going to fund was the removal, which just wasn't worth going through the federal requirements for the removal only. So I'm working with Todd, he's looking at funding these with local funds at this point. So we're working through some of the minor changes that'll make in the plans. Probably the main thing we have to work through is the contract documents. When federal funding is available for the projects, the DOT puts those together. So we'll put together contract documents, finish up the environmental permit that was never finalized as they were waiting for some of the federal funding requirements, so we'll get that permit submitted by the end of the year and try to get this bid early next year for 2026 construction. The second project is a bridge replacement on Second Avenue Northwest in the city of Bellfield. We're looking through a few different options for this bridge replacement. It's a fairly tight area, a tight crossing over a tributary to the Hart River. So we're looking to find out if we can fit a box culvert there, or if we'd have to go to like a aluminum arch or a bridge to fit the bypass and the structure in there. So we're working through that analysis, hoping to have that complete by the end of the year with cost estimates and kind of a recommendation on how to move forward with that project. That project is a finalist for the flex funding through the DOT. I don't think we've heard yet, Todd, if that was awarded. Okay. We should hear soon if that actually gets awarded, but it is a finalist for the DOT flex funding, so that'd be the payment for that. The third project is Ninety-eighth Avenue Southwest. This is another bridge replacement. This is actually just northwest of one of our low water crossing projects. You can see it on the bottom of the map there. We did complete the hydraulics for this. This would require a nine-by-nine double reinforced concrete box culvert. We're about twenty percent with our, twenty percent complete with our plans. We've got the environmental fieldwork complete, and again, hoping to wrap plans up here for bidding this and construction in twenty-six. There will be some coordination we'll have to do with the low water crossing project. Obviously, if these are completed in the same year, there'd be some phasing. There is a residence to the southwest, so we'll have to work through how that phasing works between those two projects as well. The final project is Lehigh Drive. We had submitted this for the flex funding. This was not awarded any funds. We did do the environmental fieldwork and the geotechnical fieldwork for this bridge replacement shortly after the city came out with their 2050 comprehensive plan. In reviewing that, we noticed that they are showing a potential southeast truck route in this general area. So obviously, that would impact what type of a structure we would do here. I did have a quick discussion with city staff just to see how serious that plan was. He said they are starting to talk to the DOT and working to at least plan to have a bypass complete by the end of their 2050 comprehensive plan. So that would be within the design life of a structure that we would put in here. So we've kinda stopped working on our plans and things like that. What I would recommend is maybe we put a group together to sit down with the city and the DOT just to talk through what the plan is for this structure. Obviously, if we go to that type of a structure, there would probably be some involvement from those parties as well. So not sure who would like to be involved in that or what works for a meeting like that, but that's how I'd recommend kinda moving forward with this project.
Well, I think we would certainly participate. Commissioner White would certainly be part of that. Anyone else who would want to certainly would. I would join in as well if needed, so. On the last project, a bridge replacement like that, would that be, is that strictly gonna be state and local? Or would the feds be involved in that since it's a truck route, or how's that work?
We were originally looking to fund that with local, but we weren't looking to have it be a truck route. Obviously, we go to truck route. We're talking a lot larger structure. That's something we'd have to talk through with the city and the DOT. I believe the city has mentioned this to the DOT, because there would be a interchange that would need to be put on at the interstate as well if they do that. So obviously, the interchange would be federal funded. The bypass route, that's to be determined. I would assume it'd be a combination of city, county, federal, DOT. I'm not sure. But we'd have to work through those if that is a serious route.
Significant costs.
Correct.
All right. Any other questions for Andrew? Hearing none. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you.
James, I see you, are you, you're just observing. Okay, thank you. Okay, next on our agenda is Allison Ritter. If she would come up, she's our executive of the Western Dakota Energy Association. Welcome to our meeting.
Good morning. Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you for coming.
And the rest of the Stark County Commission. My name is Allison Ritter. I'm the executive director of the Western Dakota Energy Association. I came here today. I've had the pleasure of meeting Neil and Paul and Dean, but I haven't got to meet the other Commissioners. We got to meet at the Association of Counties meeting, so part of my purpose today is just to say hello and introduce myself as the new executive director. I took over for Jeff Simon in July, but I've been on with the association since April. And it's very important to me as the new executive director to make sure that I'm getting out and meeting who our members are and saying hello and talking to you about the benefits of your membership. You have been past members. I actually checked right before I stepped up to the microphone today. We've not received membership dues from Stark County yet, so I don't know if that is on purpose or if that's just because it's getting to the end of the year, but maybe this is more of a plea to say, here's why your membership is so important to us, and allows us to do.
Waiting for a sales pitch.
I didn't wanna come, I didn't plan on coming up here and making it a sales pitch. It really was just, here's what I've been working on and why your membership matters. But it also, WDEA also includes the LoadPass system, which is your overweight truck permitting system, and part of your dues goes into being members of that as well. And we know that counties find that very valuable. It's a part of their revenue stream that helps, you know, helps repair roads and bridges. And I see you maybe a recipient of flex funding, so that's great. So hopefully, you are still considering being members, and I know there's a break after this, so if you're not, we can certainly talk through that. But I wanna tell you a little bit about what I've been updo since taking over. Jeff is still around in some capacity, but we started doing tours of the west where I got to meet face-to-face with a lot of our membership. And we also conducted roundtables this, this fall. What was made very apparent to me from the very beginning was that the, one of the sole jobs of Western Dakota Energy Association is to protect the gross production tax formula, making sure that that formula stays intact so that county cities and schools whom we represent receive their fair share of, of the GPT funding. It's worth noting that Western Dakota Energy Association is the only association that solely represents counties, cities, and school districts in oil, gas, and coal-producing counties, and that's important because that puts your interests first in what I am doing. So we went on these roundtables, and we met with membership to talk about how you're using the GPT. And we are in the process right now of collecting data from member communities as far as how they're using their GPT revenues, but then also collecting data from other eastern counties and making a comparative analysis as far as why the GPT is so beneficial. We plan on having updates on this study periodically throughout the year. We intend on having our first update probably in the first quarter of next year, just to keep you informed on how we're coming with that study. But the full intent is to defend the GPT heading into the next session. We don't know if we're going to need to defend it, but I have, what I always tell my kids is better to have it and not need it than need it and not have it. And so we're taking that full approach heading into the next session. We plan on wrapping up that study next fall and have a full defense ready with talking points and, and information for all of our membership as well as myself going into the next session. Another thing that we are working on, just kind of a housekeeping thing, taking over as an executive director. We haven't done a strategic plan in five years, and I think strategic plans are incredibly important to any organization, especially as we move into the next phase of growth in oil and gas production and even coal production. You've heard probably former Director Helms talk about how there was in the harvest phase. Well, now in oil and gas production, we're looking at the possibility of terminal decline, and what does that mean for state revenues? So preparing ourselves for what will the association advocate for in the future? And what are some of the positions that we should take? And part of that, I think, that's gonna come out of that strategic plan, not for sure yet, but feedback that we've had from our board, information that we've received from the roundtables that we have done, the focus groups, I guess I should say, is that diversification of the economy, right, and value-added ag and energy is going to be very important to our communities. And one of the ways that we can get there is through linear infrastructure. There's going to be a need to advocate for linear infrastructure. So is that something that the association will look at? So we look forward to having the results of our strategic plan and working towards that strategic plan. It was very important to me that the vendor that put it together have a list of boxes that I need to check and objectives that I need to meet as an executive director, so we know that we're meeting our goals five years into the future. I also believe that part of the strategic plan is going to have a need to educate legislators, right? As lobbyists and as the lobbyist for the association, there's a dramatic need to educate not just legislators in the west about the needs, because they're pretty tuned in, but educate the legislators in the east. And that's pretty much everything from our association. You get to about Burley County and over, right, up and down. That's the need to educate them on the needs of the west, as well as educating legislators as they come in. We know with turn limits, that's going to be very challenging with understanding the gross production tax formula and what it means and why that money needs to keep going out to the west. So part of what I'm doing in the interim, I should have given this to you in advance. Is creating a packet for legislators to understand who we are and why it matters. Just real high-level advocacy positions that the organization should be taking, right? Strong support of the gross production tax because it's the in lieu of property tax. Supporting school funding coming out west because we know great communities start with great schools. Supporting our coal industry and having policies that strengthen the reliability of coal and the sustainability of coal. And then, like I mentioned earlier, value-added industries. We also put out a tax study every two years that we provide to legislators as well. We're looking at how we can improve that tax study to make sure they fully understand not only the benefits that go to western counties, but counties that go to them as well. And the back page, you'll see just information on how they can help, who I am as the executive director. But I wanna point you to page three because in my talks and since I've taken over as an executive director, one clear picture was painted for me. And so I thought, what better way than to put it together for legislators to understand the impact that the oil industry has on our state? And the great Senator Wardner from out here called it the golden goose, right? We have to protect the golden goose. And so when I looked at it from a big picture, it's not just the golden goose, but it's the nest that it sits in. And that nest is the communities where you live. And so if you look at how the oil industry supports counties and state budgets, how the gross production tax from the oil industry is part of the in lieu of property tax that helps the money go back to the communities where it matters most. That GPT addresses the challenges and supports the needs like water, infrastructure, housing, schools. That all impacts the quality of life. And when we improve the quality of life by receiving the GPT funding that we need, that makes, that attracts things like retail, and that attracts things, attracts things like restaurants and other amenities that make people wanna live in your communities, which supports the workforce. And the workforce, not only is the oil and gas industry, we know that's healthcare, that's teachers, that's so many other industries. And it's all one big loop. And I think I've been told by many legislators, I've showed this to already, that this is a great picture of what, why what Western Dakota Energy does and why it matters. So I will be spending most of the interim getting this into as many legislators' hands as possible. It's my goal to meet with every single one of them and have this in their hand before the next legislature starts. And I think that's a good point to bring up when the next legislature starts. We fully intend as an association to have a list of legislative priorities and legislative objectives that, and policy positions really, that we will take positions on. That's not something the association has had in the past, and that's something I'm going to be looking for our board and subcommittees from our board to provide guidance and come together to put those legislative priorities together. I think that's really important to know what we will and what we won't take positions on in order to create or have a united front of the association, and that's, that's really, really important to me. So we plan on working on those throughout the interim and look for your input at our next annual meeting, which we are tentatively planning at the end of October of next year, tentatively and minute. That annual meeting is going to be very vital for this organization to move into the next phase of having those priorities and driving the organization forward as we move into the next phase of oil, gas, and coal development. So with that, I'll stop talking and say I appreciate the time, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Allison, you and I have visited in the past about the challenge of our counties out west where you have the high production, low population. And how do you envision going into, for example, you know, Cass County, which has six legislative districts or more? I can't even remember anymore. It's a huge number. And how do you educate those and sell your pitch that allows not only gross production but legacy earnings to, to come back to the areas that have really been impacted by it? What's your?
Chairman Messer and members of the committee, thank you for that question. That's going to be the challenge of the organization, and why legislative education is so important is so they understand the value that the west brings to the east. We thankfully have a lot of friends in the east. It starts with me building relationships with those legislators out east and making sure that they can come to me with questions. But the second is backing it up with data, and that's the purpose of the gross production tax study that we are putting together, is to have the data, to have the information as far as the benefits to western communities and how that differs from eastern communities, and that's why we're including eastern communities in our study. I think another benefit as well will be, even though, let me, let me back up. Even though eastern counties and cities have already received, have received money from the oil industry, right? I mean, the vast majority of, of tax revenue from the oil industry actually goes to the other parts of the state.
We know that.
Yeah, yeah, you know that. And when you, I didn't bring my. Yeah, yeah, you know that. And when you, I didn't bring my tax study, but if you actually look on page one, there's taxstudy.nd.energy.org. That will pull up. It'll show production versus revenues distributed. And Cass County and Grand Forks County are always in black, right? So they've received benefits. We know that. I do think, and this goes back to the pitch about linear infrastructure. We've got the Bakken East Pipeline that is being proposed, right, to bring natural gas from the West to the eastern side of the state, something that's a project that's been talked about for decades, really, and since I've been in the state. I think, and I'm hopeful, that now that a physical product is being moved to the East, where these increased tangible benefits will come to these communities, that it will open up the eyes and the need to support that continued production. I kind of put it as an analogy, and I don't know if it's a great analogy, but the East was kind of getting their allowance without having to do chores.
Right.
And so now, now they're going to have to do some chores in terms of, okay, do we have to zone for this new infrastructure that's going in? Or we're getting, they're getting the results, the physical product that's coming out of the West as opposed to just getting the money that's handed out. And that's the, that's the parallel that I have to make, and that's my job to, if they really want to keep revenues are one thing, but that diversified economy for when that industry eventually runs out and, you know, I hope it's not for many, many lifetimes, but it's going to, here's other ways that your economy has been diversified by bringing in this additional resource.
Thank you.
Welcome.
It is, it is tough considering what, there's 53 counties and you're probably representing 20 of us.
Roughly, yeah. It's a little less, more like 17.
Like Neil said, the populations out there, they have all the voting power and you have a wall ahead of you.
They, they do. Part of our process, too, is also including legislators in on our objectives, our legislative priorities and objectives. We want them to feel included on, they won't be setting the priorities, right, but at least they'll be aware of what our association priorities are to get them on board with us, to make sure that not only do we have a unified front as an association, but we have a unified front from our legislators as well and our representation.
Anything else? Well, thank you very much for making the trip today.
Thank you so much for your time.
Thanks for your work.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay, it is 9:50. We will take a 10-minute break and resume at 10 o'clock.
I think she thought that you had your laptop too.
I am plugged in, I'm up now.
I think that's your slide. I'm not sure if she put.
What's?
I don't think she put anything else up there.
Oh, no, this is mine. Yeah, this is mine, I'm good, okay. Good morning, I'm Emergency Manager Scott, I am going by my new last name now, so. I know. I'm still getting used to that, so. Community lifelines are stable, something interesting across the country, there is, we use Everbridge for emergency notification system, there is one called Code Red that is currently down right now, so there is a little bit of communications instability, but our system is secure and operating fine, so we are all green across the board. For November, we saw about double the calls as last year, just because of those controlled burns when the snow hit. Everyone started lining their pits up, which is what the fire chiefs actually prefer, so we saw a huge increase in controlled burns, couple of structure fires, couple of brush fires, couple of vehicle fires, so nothing too out of the ordinary other than the increase in controlled burns. With winter coming up, I just want to remind everyone to continue having safe practices as they go through the winter season, so keeping an eye on the the weather forecast, only using generators and responsible heating sources, generator should be outside, and then as far as interior, do not use, let's say like grills or ovens to heat your interior, you're looking at potential of carbon monoxide poisoning, which is deadly. Any heating sources that have a flame, keep at least three feet of distance between combustible items, I've been to quite a few candle fires in the winter, so it is something that happens and happens frequently, so be cautious. And then travel safe, and then pack a emergency kit with you in case you are stranded while traveling, we all saw the snow Friday. I saw a lot of overturned semis on the road, it was getting pretty bad, so we are potentially looking at a bad winter season for travel. And then Road Superintendent Miller mentioned it, but I do want to thank him and the sheriffs for helping out the food pantry. We quite literally couldn't have done it without their help, the semi that brought the forty-two thousand pounds of food. It was a new driver, he was not comfortable backing into the port, so if he, if we did not have that forklift, we probably would have been unloading forty-two thousand pounds of food one by one, so huge help. And then the sheriffs helped with that as well, the following week, they got a shipment of frozen and refrigerator foods, and I'd like to thank Bronze Distributing for giving them some space to put overflow stock, so the community has been very helpful with the food pantry and very grateful for that, so. Are there any questions on that?
Excuse me, any questions for Elena on that? You're good.
I have a couple other things. Ross, they're there, I think we have a couple contracts that I'm just looking to renew for dispatch, one is the Motorola contract, that is for their radio and phone answering system.
Did you send contracts?
I did.
I have the coordinator position and I have the slide that they were discussing.
I did send contracts.
Okay. When does that do?
January.
Okay, can we do it at the end of December meeting, is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay, let's move that.
Are those renewals or?
The renewals, yeah, they're nothing new and just need to renew them, so, okay.
I'll put them in their packets for the end of January.
Okay, yeah, that works. So then I guess on my agenda would be for the position for the training and exercise coordinator, I do have a vacated position currently, it is a part-time position, so I would be looking at moving it to a full-time position and then changing the the job to this training and exercise coordinator. I created a packet for you guys detailing what I think is necessary to, for my agency to perform those duties, the time I think it takes, why I think it is necessary to have a position for that. Me and Sheriff Lee have talked a little bit about the the needs of his agency as far as training, I think it's something that this position could assist with. I've had discussions with the fire department, with the ambulance service, obviously we share in that endeavor. They have a lot of things moving forward with that, that I think my agency could be a huge asset to, but I think that training and exercise position would be vital in supporting those operations. I guess I'd be open to questions.
Thank you, Ms. Scott.
Mrs.
Mrs. Scott.
I'm not gonna get used to that.
Packet, I think it's actually, it's, well, it's kind of a little bit of a repeat, we went through this a little bit, but this is, this is better than what you put together the last time. And I was in favor of it the last time, but I guess I was, you know, sitting here thinking, what can move the needle here? And I, I'll ask you, so what trainings would you say that we lack locally here that are putting our citizens at risk?
Locally, I think a lot of ICS trainings. ICS training, incident command trainings. It kind of puts us in a position to operate efficiently whenever we do have a large disaster, that's kind of the standard across the nation, is you want a standardized operating system so that everything goes according to plan. We're writing, I'm writing the, I'm completely rewriting our emergency operation plan, and then I'm writing annexes to that, it's, one of the requirements is actually a distribution plan, so how we distribute supplies in an emergency, so anytime I write a plan, I have to test it. And some of this stuff takes training, and there are like volunteer trainings, there's hazmat trainings that we should be doing. I'm not sure if Sheriff Lee has anything he could add that his agency needs to do, but I just think there's a plethora of trainings that we can bring in, EOC trainings, communications trainings are huge, we moved to this new radio system and our responders are doing a good job, but they need more training on the system so that they can feel more comfortable operating it and switching channels and moving to mutual aid channels.
I've sat in, you're in the LAPC meetings, sat in our PSAB board, I mean, I, I keep hearing that we are behind the eight ball a little bit on as far as hazmat training.
Yep.
With the, you know, the Richardson expansion out there, I think that that could be an issue, but anyway, I just was curious. You're trying to get a department up to a standard, to basically a national standard.
I'm, I'm trying to get us up to a standard that is, would be nationally recognized as the goal, which is a strong training and exercise program, as one of the key components. And I think everyone in our county wants that too, the, I've talked to, I've talked to a couple agencies about, you know, how could this position be an asset to you, you know, and I've heard a lot of approval and a lot of desire to have that, we talked about the Richardson expansion, I mean, they're looking at bringing in, what, jet fuel production, I mean, that's a huge risk, that obviously takes planning, preparedness, training for those responders out there.
And with the current makeup of your staff, it's just not, it's, well, I mean, it's not that you cannot provide trainings, it's just very, very limited.
Very limited.
Yes.
What's the dollar amount on this?
I was looking at fifty-eight to sixty-two, I currently have thirty in that budget line item because it was a part-time position. I think if there's anybody who is interested in maybe a lateral transfer, I don't know if Sheriff Lee can spare a person, but I don't, I know he pays a little higher than I do, the potential for a lateral transfer.
Uh, yeah, Elena, Mrs. Scott. We sat down and discussed this a little bit yesterday again, and, you know, talked about a sixty-forty split, you know, I don't even know that we would need forty necessarily, but potentially, I think our biggest hiccup is obviously, you know, finding someone that fit this mold, that had law enforcement experience, has experience Elena needs. Maybe a little difficult, and maybe we do have that in-house and maybe we don't. But obviously, if you guys think about it, and I don't like saying this aloud, but we're the department that's most likely going to get you sued at some point, it's just the way it is, that's thank you, Amanda. It's just the bear we, or the, the, what we bear in law enforcement, so it is what it is. You know, and the post board has now increased our requirements up to seventy-five hours every three years rather than sixty. It's obviously much cheaper to do that stuff in-house rather than send somebody down the road. Some of that is available online, but they do have a certain amount that is required in person per the post board's requirements, so. Obviously, we have a lot of things that I would like to do in-house, I, I think, and we've had this discussion before, training is, is something we can always improve on. I, I don't want to say we're lacking because we do offer our staff a lot of ability to go and do these things, but we could be that much better if we could do things in-house, so.
So this, this issue was brought up the last time, this subject was brought up, Commissioner White had mentioned that you were looking for training, and I don't disagree that you probably would need something at the sheriff's department, but does that, does that person exist? Where, I mean, where you, I mean, what I don't want to do is try to well, mix the two and then end up with a person that's no good for either one of them.
I think for the dollar amount I'm trying to set it at, that's very difficult. It might even be difficult to find someone just for my needs at the dollar amount. I don't know.
Question I would have, Elena, is, okay, so if, if this proposal of yours gets approved and you advertise and try to fill the position, are there, are there other assets that once the position is filled, you come back and say, okay, well, I have this position, now I need this, I mean, I would like to see if, if there's anything out there that you need that we're, you know, we recognize that, acknowledge that right away, so.
Oh, are you, as, once I fill this, do I think I'm going to need anything else in the future?
Well, it's assets, so do you need
Oh.
another vehicle, do you need a specialty equipment, I mean, all this kind of stuff.
For that position, no particular, I, I think I could use a incident command vehicle, but that would be primarily just for my agency, but that's probably a different discussion. I'm actually trying to find some funding for that before coming to you guys about that. But for that position, no, I'm hoping that position actually is going to be able to just write grants to bring in a lot of those trainings, to save on costs, a lot of FEMA and Department of Homeland Security trainings are free. It's just about coordinating them and getting on the schedule and getting them here. Yeah, I don't, I don't see me coming to you guys and asking for anything specifically to, for that position as I need as an additional asset, now for my agency alone, probably, but that's down the road. Another part of this position I kind of see is branching out more into a public education role, assisting with that, that's kind of where I really want to start focusing on with my position on top of the planning is more public education. I want to do community workshops probably once a quarter, getting people ready for summer weather, for winter weather, I want to do the CERT class for the public, for the schools, the teen CERT. So that's just stuff that takes more time, more resources, but I think with an extra person dedicated to some of those other critical tasks, I can break off the time to do more of that stuff, and I think it's important for the community.
So you think in your current budget, you could buy those resources next year that they would need to do some of these trainings? Or are we going to?
Yeah, I think we can do those trainings for free, like for the public.
Yeah, but you're still going to have like props and pamphlets and, you know what I mean, like all that costs money, so I'm just.
Yeah, and I kind of have that worked into, essentially just use the money I have in my budget and focus it towards that kind of stuff. I don't think I should need to need more props, the nice thing is still being on the fire department is I still have access to the building, so I tend to borrow their stuff a lot.
Well, I know this is a hard subject for people to grasp, this whole, I mean, you're looking for something tangible here about emergency management, and I, and I, you know, I've been on this portfolio for three years now, and I, you know, I get it, I get it, I mean, and it's like, I, I, we're, look, we're trying to be prepared for the future, and trying to predict the future is extremely difficult, but I also don't want to be, you know, something happened in the future and we're extremely unprepared as well, and I, and I feel like that there's that case currently.
I think the needs for emergency management are just going to keep increasing, I mean, we saw the wildfires that were historic, and then we saw the tornado that went through Enderland, that was, that EF5. I know at the Fire Chiefs Association, they're talking about their fire departments being more involved with their emergency managers, and we'd love to be, and I, I have a pretty good relationship with all of my fire chiefs, I meet with them at least once a month, we talk, I see what they need. I'm already scheduling out in January to go to their, their agencies, I do a yearly training with them, so, you know, I'm already doing that, so. I think we're pretty good, but you're going to see across the state, a lot of emergency managers are going to get tasked, taxed with a lot more work to do, and it's just going to continue to increase. I mean, disasters don't stop unfortunately.
And the only feedback, I'm glad you addressed some of the concerns that I had last time, is that the utilization of this individual to make sure, you know, usually you got a training coordinator or training individual in an organization, you know, there's several, one trainer guy, person, individual can train several hundred people throughout an organization. So I like the thought that you got a couple letters here as well, and then Sheriff Lee as well provided some feedback, but I definitely want to, the utilization of that individual, I mean, whoever that may be, will have to know that whatever this job description is, it's going to grow from there, I mean, it.
Yeah, and I think, I think they have to be ready to grow with the job.
And I, I think if this is something that the commission approves, I mean, this would be something that definitely as, as this, this position takes off, we definitely would like to be kept up to date on training material, cost of that training, obviously that individual is going to have to travel to do some training, I'm assuming.
Yeah, a lot of the, the trainings in state that I would probably send them to are reimbursed by the state. There are maybe some outside trainings I would look at sending them to, work that into my training budget, that, I mean, I currently have a good training budget that is probably underutilized just because of the reimbursements from the state.
Is that individual going to be involved in the pipeline tabletops?
Any tabletop I can send them to, I'm sending them to, for the experience, the knowledge, the learning.
Osro stuff as well for water training and spills in, in waterways, so I think that could be a broad position that person can fill, but when it comes to a training coordinator, you know, my feedback is, is that sometimes they, they get stagnant too, so.
Is, is the title just the hangup? Because I can change it to like, exercise coordinator. I will say, you, you do figure out what trainings you need from the exercises, so I lean more heavy on the exercises, but exercise training coordinator doesn't, to me, roll off the tongue is nice, but.
I guess the title doesn't mean so much, it's just, I mean, the job description, make sure it's just broad enough.
Yep.
I would like to, I mean, if it's possible, if there would be some subject matter that would bleed over into the sheriff's department somehow, I mean, and be an asset to the sheriff's department, that'd be great. Have some flexibility.
Yeah, I think that, I mean, in emergency management, you kind of have to be like a multi-tool, we kind of have to have, you know, a knowledge and a little bit of everything, which, you know, makes everything really intensive for us.
Is our emergency management, I know you guys work with the local first responders and stuff, do we do anything with the hospitals?
Yep, I started, I did a tabletop for them a couple months ago, facilitated that. And took two months to write it, you know, I've worked sixty days on the after action, waiting to hear back on the state. You know, I, I want to do more with them, they want to do more with me, we want to do more with like Southwest District Health, I get invited to the nursing homes to do their annual exercise. Marathon invites me to their annual exercise, the refinery invites me to their, I get invited to all the annual exercises, so I participated at all.
So is it, there going to be a time where you're probably going to be needing an assistant for this person also, I mean, is that something we have to look at?
No, I don't think so, with me and my deputy, I'm, if we have a lapse in things we're doing, I think we can actually just be an asset to that person and help them, or if they're good, we can just add on to the extra exercises that we're developing, so. Opportunity is to make more than what we're doing now, which is one to two a year, I'm only required technically to do one a year to keep my EMPG funding, but I don't think that's enough for the county and the responders, I don't, I can't hit everybody with just one exercise, not possible, and I can't meet everyone's needs with just one.
I have one more question about the cost, so I'm looking at your education and experience that you're wanting and desired qualifications. Where did you come up with the, between fifty-eight and sixty-two thousand, because based on what you are asking for for education and experience and desired qualifications, that's going to be a tough sell.
Yeah. You know, that was a tough position to find even nationally, I mean, the couple I found were in the ninety K, and I just didn't think that would be palatable, so I think when I talked to Joetta, that's kind of the range we came up with just to try first. I'd like to see it a little higher, but I also just know it's just tough with adding a new position, it's tough, it adds a lot of expenses.
Is there any grants available for a position like this, or how would like the city benefits from that, how about their contribution towards this position, have you considered that, or?
I did kind of throw it out there to the fire department if they wanted to join in, and it did sound like they thought it would be possible right now.
City itself, all the businesses that benefit from this, you know, the different training you do.
I could reach out to the city directly. I just reached out to the fire department because they have a training person currently, and I thought if we shared the position slightly, we could, you know, they pay for a portion, I give them hours in the day to assist their training officer.
Thank you.
Well, we have nothing to offer to any other agency if we don't have one.
True.
Any other questions? Comments? Any motions?
I guess it's up to me again. Mr. Chairman, I would move to approve the emergency manager's request to add a position of training and exercise coordinator and begin the search and set the salary requirements at somewhere between fifty-eight and sixty-two thousand as she has requested.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second? Call second time for a second. Call third time for a second. Hearing none, motion fails for lack of a second.
And then lastly, I had emailed, or it should have been emailed to you guys, I created a relief fund report for you guys for the two operations that we did last year, part of the agreement was that I would create a year-end report. Yep, it was, it was like thirty some pages, so. Just went over the two operations we, we did in twenty-twenty-five, which were in January and February. Servicing about twenty-two individuals throughout those two operations, and then relief funds I used were a hundred thirty-eight dollars eighty-seven cents, making that relief fund remaining amount nine thousand eight hundred sixty-one dollars thirteen cents. Because I have enough in that account, I will not be asking for an additional contribution to that fund, because the whole goal of that fund was not to create a slush fund, so. I think I'm good with that amount, and we'll see where this year takes us, and then we'll see where what happens with, so, but I just put that together if you guys have any questions, otherwise I won't expound upon it.
Good information.
Thank you.
Thanks for your effort.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Right. We have some beer and liquor license renewals in front of you. Are we doing those one at a time, I'm assuming?
So I want to say how excited I am, we got every single one this year. Early, early, so everybody paid and everybody I looked over is good to go. And if you want to approve them.
Collectively or?
Collectively, let me see how many we have.
There's no new applicants here, they're all the same from last year.
They're all renewals, same from last year, yeah, and so we have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, eight altogether. If you want me to read them off, I can, and then you can make your motion if you want.
I, we have them in our packet. I would just
Okay.
ask the technical question if we can approve them collectively or if we have to do them individually.
I think we can approve them collectively.
I think you can.
So I would entertain a motion to approve the renewals as submitted.
That motion.
By Commissioner Marsh, seconded by Commissioner White, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries, okay, next. Audit engagement letter proposal.
So I did reach out, there was another firm that was potentially sending over a proposal for doing our audit. They said that their schedule's too full for this coming year, so they did not submit a proposal, but this is the state auditor's proposal for our twenty-twenty-four regular audit and also the single audit for the federal compliance. I just wanted if the commission is okay with going forward with this. Timeline wise, we were going to be starting to send the information over in January. And then I would have another one coming before you because we would also like to complete the twenty twenty five audit. It won't be as much as this one because we don't have to have a single audit done. So the twenty twenty five audit, you know, you're probably looking at about, I guess you could take about. Ten, you know, eleven grand off this cost and that's probably what you're looking at for the twenty twenty five audit would be my best guess.
What was the cost last year?
The final total, I think, was right below what I had budgeted, so. I want to say. It wound up being thirty, was it thirty eight? Does that sound right longer?
That's the number that rings my bell.
I want to say it's right around thirty eight.
And there was only one, one other firm that expressed any interest and now they don't have any interest. That was local?
They were out of Fargo. It would be the same firm that does the city of Dickinson. But their schedule's too full, so.
Okay, any thoughts? If not, I would entertain a motion to authorize the. Auditor to engage with the state auditor for the twenty twenty four audit.
So this, real quick, this is their total for twenty twenty four?
Yep. So their, which this is their proposal, but their total proposal is forty eight thousand four thirty. Because we do have to have the federal single audit in there. But for twenty five, we won't have to have a single audit. So you can take ten thousand off for twenty fives, which we want to get twenty fives done too. I want to get caught up. We're now behind.
Are we stuck with this pricing? Is this not a proposal? This is just what it's going to be?
I mean, I think we're kind of stuck.
They're, I mean, they, they bill you on an hourly rate and they just say, hey, typically based on our experience with your county, we think it takes this many hours to do, so.
Has staffing changed at the state as far as?
Not from our twenty three. We are on, let's see, I started in twenty one and I've been through three sets. Of, of auditors from the state. So, but we should have the same. From our, the audit we completed this year for twenty three, we should have the same.
That would help, keep the cost down.
It does, it does help a lot. But yeah, we have went, the state has went through a lot of auditors, yes.
I just looked it up and it was thirty four thousand for our last audit.
Okay, thank you.
Perfect. But that did not have a single audit.
It did not?
No. Twenty three, we didn't need to have a single audit. Twenty four, we do. Twenty five, we don't.
Roughly a four thousand, let maybe call it five thousand dollar increase year over year.
Yeah.
With the single audit.
Without the single.
I mean, it didn't really go up much for a while, but. It seems we're kind of, we're a little pigeonholed here. We don't really have other offers to do our audit, so.
Okay, so can I get a motion to move this forward?
So moved.
By Commissioner White, can I get a second?
A second.
By Commissioner Franchuk. Any other discussion? Hearing none. Well, we'll do a roll call vote. Commissioner White?
Aye.
Commissioner Franchuk?
Aye.
Commissioner Claris?
Aye.
Commissioner Fran, or excuse me, Commissioner Marsh? Chair votes aye, motion carries.
Just so the commission knows, some of this. Included in here is our two component units, which is, that gets audited with us, which is the JDA and the Water District, and they do pay for their share. It's just included in this.
All right, thank you. Arca Search, Karen.
Okay, so I asked Arca, which is our, our minutes archive, to please give us a annual contract. Where we can send them our minutes and they will upload them without all these separate contracts. And so this is what they sent over. It just says how much is per image and the setup for the new PDFs. We send it to them once a year. The commission agrees to this, then they will get our minutes posted right away when we send them. Because I sent our minutes back, I want to say in the spring. And they still hadn't posted them until. I want to say a week or two ago. And so I want them to stay on top of it and this was the only way I knew to get them to stay on top of it. So if the commission is okay with this, it is included in your IT budget. But it would just be an annual contract saying, I'm going to send the minutes over and you're going to post them and then bill us for those minutes you posted.
I don't, I don't, I don't see any issue. Do we need formal action on that?
Yep, just to approve this annual contract.
So this is a, a price per page? In the creation of a PDF?
Yep, so that three twenty five will be like a one time thing. And then it's fifty five cents per image, which, so per page. And then it gets put on the web, on the search engine. Yep. But we don't know how many pages we have until the end of the year. Depends how chatty you get.
Did we get dictate a font size?
So it's just that we scan the minutes from the meetings, we scan them in and I send the PDFs over to them, have Charlotte send them.
Okay, can I get a motion to approve that? Authorize approval.
I'll make the motion to approve it.
By Commissioner White?
A second.
By Commissioner Franchuk. Can we just approve that? It's already in the budget. So any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signified by saying aye. Pose same sign, motion carries, thank you.
One follow up on that. So this here is in hopes that they move along a little quicker?
Right, because they're not very organized and they will wait like six months to tell me that. To send me a, a new like term to say this is how much we're charging you to post these six months worth of minutes. I'm hoping this annual thing will just eliminate that.
Okay, next on the agenda is the phone system upgrade. Mr. Jeremiah.
Jeremiah Kirkpatrick, IT Coordinator. So we've had a lot of developments on this phone system over the last month. Met with. With Consolidated and their CEO cut us a couple of really good options. That we should take a look at. For our phones. Did you guys get the email I sent out?
Yes.
Okay, so you got four sections there and those are like. Four different options for us to do. You can do the in-house purchase machine networked, and that was the quote we got last. Last month for two hundred twenty five thousand. You can get rid of the networking, which is basically the. Being able to transfer from building to building. If you get rid of the licensing for that. That knocks it down to one eighty two. And these are the, these are the ones I like here. You can lease, which means we don't own it. We don't own the phones, we don't own the hardware. And that one with them being networked would be one seventy two. So with, with the lease one and networking, one seventy two allows you to transfer calls around all of our buildings. The lease standalone is no networking, no, no transferring out of the building. That's one forty five. You, you're getting, you're getting down there into, well, that one's minus. That one's eighty thousand dollars less than the initial quote from last month, so. That offers probably the best bang for our buck as far as resilience and security. And this is the one I. I'm kind of backing. And then there's the cloud. There's some hidden fees in the cloud, like PoE switches, probably some wiring. Because we're all pots right now. They would have to be converted to Ethernet.
That number there, the seventy four nine on the cloud, just basically reflects consolidated costs. That does not reflect the, the additional costs that the county would have to have.
Correct. But that would come with the networking, so. I mean, you could easily see that number go up. Another fifty. With all the extra stuff that needs to be done.
Is that what you've come up with as far as the additional switches and things, the initial cost to get that?
And labor and time. You're going to lose your fax. If you go to the cloud, we'll have to get another service to do faxes. You, you lose a lot of. Stuff going from pots to clouds, so.
So one big factor that was discussed in these meetings is, which I, the folks from Consolidated are here and I really appreciate their efforts here. They were asked to provide us options here. I mean, the initial quote that we got from them basically was that, that top, that top quote, and that was the most resilient. With, with networking included and obviously in us purchasing all the equipment, but that resiliency factor is big here. Right now, currently, the courthouse does not have much for resiliency. If the internet goes down, our, we lose our phones here.
Yes.
With the, the, the top, well, all four of the top options there would actually, that'll change now. The courthouse itself will have resiliency, there'll be a hardwire for the courthouse.
Yes, there are, we will no longer be internet dependent. On our phones. If the network goes down, we can still receive calls, be it an emergency or not.
Well, we, we asked for options and they give, I think, I think they gave us some great, great options here, willing to work with us here. And obviously, we were cost sensitive to this thing and I believe that the lease options, the number three vertical wave. Or excuse me, lease vertical wave standalone is a really great option. We had long discussions of, I mean, we need to hear from some of the employees as far as, I mean. The standalone means that you can't transfer from, for instance. The courthouse to the LEC. Okay, you basically would have to use speed dials or, or whatever and, and versus the, the networked was you would actually be able to transfer from building to building. Which is an increased cost, as you can see, so.
So what's the term of the lease?
Sixty months?
Five years.
Five years.
And there's other features to that as well. I mean, at five years, well, we'd have to renew a contract, right? And, but they take care of all the service with that contract.
With, without a, a lease, you're only going to get maintenance on the equipment. You won't get the labor with that because we own it, right? If we go with the lease, they cover all the maintenance and labor to upkeep.
My question is, if, if you keep the equipment, at the end of year five, you've deposited or expensed a hundred and forty five thousand dollars. And then you elect to keep the equipment and renew it for another five years, do we know what that cost is?
Not right now.
Or would we have to come back in, get new equipment for an additional?
No, 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 we could.
I mean, because the current phone system is twenty some years old. You know, I don't think it's unrealistic for phone systems to last, last at least ten years. And so that would be my question is, what's it look like at the end of year five for us moving forward?
And I'm saying recurring cost sixty months and then we would be looking at paying. The recurring, is that right, Kami? Do you want to come up, sorry, just so we can?
So with the lease program, what we do at five years, at the end of five years, we would meet again and do another contract. If there's a better system or this system is end of life, we, we are in charge of taking care of that. So like right now, the vertical wave system that you have is end of life. When you're in a lease program with Consolidated, if they come back and say within the five years, it's an end of life system, that's on our dime to come in and replace that. At five years, we can meet again and discuss, do you want to do another lease? Did you want to purchase it? It's entirely up to you. What the cost will be at five years, I don't have that information.
Right. It would be nice, but.
But with everything, with the tariffs and everything, you know, and our labor rates, everything has gone up. But like Jeremiah said, with the lease, that includes labor. Okay, so if there's any troubleshooting that we have to do on the equipment, replacement of the equipment, that is all covered. There's no additional. Granted, unless somebody spills pop on equipment, that's, you know, wouldn't be covered.
Well, my, my reason for the question is if you look at the purchase non, uh. Non-networking option, a hundred and eighty two thousand versus the lease. Non-network option of a hundred forty five thousand, there's thirty seven thousand dollars difference. And if the phone systems work at, under ownership, plus some maintenance and upkeep for thirty seven plus costs. That next five years is relatively inexpensive versus coming in here at year five and then getting a different system. That way, I mean, you know, I know a lot, a lot of times with equipment, it's a lot more, they, they give you costs or lease to own, all those kind of options. Upfront, so you can make those decisions. And I don't see that here. And maybe, maybe it's not an option to get that information, but that's my concern.
To get like a lease to own?
Well, I'm just saying, I'd like to know if the, if, if we're, if we're. Promoting the idea that this phone system lasts for at least ten years, then we should have a ten year cost on it if we're going to do the lease. Versus owning it, owning it for ten years and then starting it over at the end of ten years.
And that is something I can ask for. Right now, they're saying phone systems are generally five to seven because they're more server based, just like a computer, they say, to replace every three years. I mean, that's something I can ask for.
So is this price on how many units?
It's to cover all of the existing phones that are here now. I'm sorry. It's to cover, the count of all the phones that are existing now is to replace what's existing.
Do we know what that amount is on per, that way you could do it on, figure it out on a per phone basis?
So it's about fifteen hundred.
Per phone? I thought someone last time, Jeremiah, did you say that there's?
Like two thousand per phone?
Well, how many?
How many phones do we have is the question.
Something makes me think that we're sixty some phones, is that?
I think you're closer to the hundred mark. Or hundred and twenty mark, give or take, with, what depends if you want to include the extension services and those kind of things in there too. You know, the extension and weed board. But the sheriff has quite a few phones. And then there's other devices too, besides just the phones. There's some other ancillary devices, like in the courthouse, they have some emergency call things. That we have included in there too, that aren't just the physical desk phones. But as far as your request, I mean, I can give you an estimate and Kami can find out the exact. But after the, the five year lease, if it would go to month to month, particularly probably just stay the same amount, you know, it wouldn't go up or wouldn't go down for the lease amount. Because that covers our labor to keep on maintaining the equipment, you know, as it gets older, you know, you may, we may or may not have more, you know, more things to repair as it's, as it's aging.
What is the maintenance on this equipment typically? Is it broken handheld set or?
It, it could be. Static electricity could burn out handsets in the wintertime. Phones can get dropped. Sometimes we'll cover those, but things like pop, you know, get spilled or water spills, obviously those we don't cover. But if they just go bad, you know, we'll cover those. It does come with a five year warranty, so it is a pretty good, pretty good product. The factory does have a five year warranty on it if you would purchase it, so. But the general maintenance on the phone desk, desk phones themselves would be handsets, phones themselves. And then downstairs in the, in the phone room too, in the, in the, in the brains of it down. and then downstairs in the, in the phone room too, in the, in the, uh, in the brains of it downstairs. I mean, there could potentially be things to maintain.
And the other thing, um, that wasn't mentioned, if you do like the lease, you can do different options. So the sheriff could do like a cloud system, you guys could have a summit here. So with the lease, there is an option to do different systems, you don't all have to be the same.
We did discuss the cloud for the L E C potentially. The only thing that I mean, it's, it's the additional costs of setting up that cloud, but there is possibly some advantages to the cloud system for certain departments, for sure.
And I don't think the extra cost for the networking is really necessary. I mean, I kinda feel like the auditor's office, we're kind of like the call center, right, of the county? And we get the most calls, and, I mean, I, I don't think it's necessary to pay an extra. What do you think, Lana, forty thousand dollars for? We don't have it now, we would be fine with it.
If we dial the extension office, we have to dial the whole four or five six number anyway.
We're already used to that.
But you can still transfer calls within the building.
Within the building, you can transfer calls.
Other questions?
And we can transfer calls to an outside number anyways. Like, if somebody calls us and they wanna, they're supposed to be calling the city, we can still transfer them to the city, you just dial the phone num, phone number, yeah.
Um, we did discuss this a little bit in our meetings, as far as availability of equipment. If you were to start something, you know, when would the equipment be available?
On a, on the small projects, like the weed and war, weed, weed building and the road, uh, or county agent and road, those, a couple of weeks, we could have those installed. But the bigger ones, like the courthouse and the L E C, those take a lot of background programming and setup. So we'd be about a three-month, three-month out timeframe to do it the right way and get it all set up and, and, uh, meet with the staff, make sure we got the programming set up, you know, correctly. If there's any changes, um, that might be needed from what's currently there.
Kurt, you got a comment, question?
Chairman, Chairman Commissioner, or Master and Commissioners, uh, we looked at this, cause we, this thing all started over in our office back in August when our system went down. And Kami and Consolidated come in and gave us four different options, and it's not included in this. And we had a very serious discussion within our office about the ability to transfer calls from building to building? No, we don't need it at our office. We don't feel that's necessary for the cost involved. The types of phone systems, there is a hosted phone system, I believe that's what you're calling the cloud system. When we went through the pros and the cons, just for our office, we were gonna come back at that point in time before the whole county system got involved. That's what we were gonna recommend for our office. And at that point in time, it was, I believe it was a three-year lease, cause I've got it right in front of me. It might be a little different today. Um, the question about, you know, if we go to a, if the internet goes down, which a hosted system is, we lose connectivity. We've all got this thing. You know, to, to do some of our work, and in, in my particular case with my job, uh, there's a lot of calls that I get from customers, clients, producers, people that utilize our office. Uh, over twenty-some years, they've acquired, acquired my number, so they're calling me directly instead of the office. So we're still handling being able to service those clientele. So, you know, the, the, the hosted system for us is what we were gonna recommend. We do not need the ability to transfer from one per, you know, from one building to the other. The county weed board, uh, they have a, a, a phone out there at the shop. When somebody dials that number, it's automatically, right now, they have it set up where it's automatically rerouted to our office, cause Joe handles those calls. So, wanted to provide that kind of input for you, so, so that you could have that information in your decision-making process. Thank you.
Thank you.
I, I guess one factor that came up, you had mentioned it Jeremiah, was the loss of, if you have the cloud system, you basically, unless you make, if you make some, um, or take some consideration to the whole fax thing, you lose your fax line, but you, so you'd have to have an additional line.
Considering the fax line, from our standpoint, we have it. Um, it was set up on our, our former Xerox machine, that's gone away. We don't need, we don't, we don't hardly ever fax. We just, uh, scan the email documents on our, on our side of things. The other thing that we caught when we were doing the, the analysis of the different proposals that Consolidated had gave to us for our office, we go to the hosted system. We also lose, no more charges for long-distance phone calls. Correct me if I'm wrong? So, there's pros and cons to everything. Um, just gotta wait, like I said, we were gonna recommend for us the hosted system.
But you said with the cloud system, we have no way to predict price, right? Currently or just in general? Like, I see prices here, but you said something about the cloud?
No, there's an additional cost, I mean, the cloud, these are consolidating costs for, for the cloud, but.
Those are what they're gonna pay for. We would have to put in P O E switches, maybe some network cable, cause it would all have to be converted to Ethernet to go to the cloud. There would be some extra work on our end.
Okay.
Do that, and, and there will be for him.
In, in some of the buildings is, is, is older, um, they call it, uh, house wiring, but the wiring that runs to the phones now is from twenty-five years ago. So that would need to be updated to CAT five, CAT six Ethernet wiring in some of those buildings.
Oh, okay.
That, that's where the extra costs, the extra costs would be.
Oh, okay.
And, and that would be a one-time, you know, install charge for that, so.
Okay, any other questions? Comments?
Well, if we would have to, if we had to wire the whole building, we could just get a big expensive P O E switch and stick it in the server room and run the wire to it, right? So.
What, what, the one side of the lease that, that I do like is the fact that. The end of life, we get new equipment, right?
Totally, that's what I'm thinking here.
Yes.
If it's end of life, yeah.
Yeah, or even within your five-year contract, if something would happen or your lease, and it would go end of life, that's on our dime to replace, yep.
Or if at the end of five years, we want something else.
We don't have any equipment to own, we just go to the new. Yep.
Correct.
There's a cost to that, though.
But under the lease, we cover that anyways.
Okay.
What'd you ask again about the one-year warranty?
Um, usually the cloud, uh, stuff is usually a one-year warranty on the equipment. When you buy the phone?
It says five years, right?
Or not leased.
Okay, okay, yes, okay.
Okay, so Jeremiah, you're recommending the lease vertical wave standalone, is that what your recommendation is?
Yes, that way, um, it puts us on pots wired straight to Consolidated. Don't have to worry about, uh, regulatory things, things going, uh, through the cloud that probably shouldn't or, um, the internet disconnecting phones, so.
Okay.
I'm gonna make the motion that we go with the lease vertical wave standalone for a hundred forty-five thousand four hundred dollars.
Motion by Commissioner Franchuk, do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by, uh, Commissioner Clarice, any other discussion? Questions?
So this is as many phones as we need to cover everything?
And, uh, the, uh, cost of this is in your budget?
Actually, so we did not put this in the twenty-twenty-six budget, cause we didn't know yet what those numbers were gonna be. So there is a line for phones, I think it, you know, it has two thousand dollars in it, but it will need to be adjusted in the twenty-six budget to match what we're looking at here.
Okay, so.
That's definitely not in his budget, I can tell you that.
Okay, so Commissioner Franchuk, would you like to amend your motion to, where are we?
Come out of the general fund, right?
Um, the I T, yeah, phones, general fund, yep.
Okay, second, Commissioner Clarice?
Yes.
Okay, any other discussion?
Point of clarification, does that include all buildings for that one's, for that price? Or is it just a building?
All current phones.
All buildings.
Okay.
So the price that, that Jeremiah has given is for the five-year total, right? Okay, so if we're in the budget, it'd be divided in five chunks for each year.
Yep.
Oh, okay, that makes a big difference.
So the line item that he's giving you is for the full five years.
Yeah, it says.
Not in just twenty-twenty-six, it'll be twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine.
It says, it does say right here, recurring cost sixty, at sixty months, so.
Yes, okay.
It does.
So I just wanted to clarify that.
Well, we just made the motion to.
Well, that was my, my, my original, very seldom our leases paid for five years upfront, so.
Twenty-nine thousand eighty, so maybe you wanna redo your motion with this amount?
Well, but it's gonna be one thirty-six five divided by sixty plus four twenty-twenty-six, we have to add eighty-nine hundred to that amount.
Yes.
Okay.
You have what?
And then the, the one-time setup fee, that's just the very first. The very first, it's one year, the first year, there's no more of that reoccurring one-time setup fee.
Okay, so for the first year, we need the eighty-nine hundred plus?
So we need twenty-seven three plus eighty-nine hundred.
For the first year.
For the lease, and then the.
For twenty-six.
Yeah.
Okay, that's much better.
Okay, so Mr. Franchuk, would you make a motion, please, or withdraw your motion, or amend your motion for twenty-seven thousand three hundred entering the contract? And then, uh, authorize expenditure of thirty-six thousand two hundred for the, uh, initial expense for the system?
Okay, I'll amend my motion then to go with the thirty-six thousand two hundred, is that what close?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Clarice?
Uh, I will second that.
Okay.
So then that includes the recurring fee of how much per year?
No, the annual, the dollar amount is like twenty-two seventy-five per month.
Okay, plus the, okay.
One, yeah, but that's first year, the eighty-nine hundred is one time.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, any other discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote, Commissioner Franchuk.
Aye.
Commissioner Clarice.
Aye.
Commissioner White.
Aye.
Commissioner Marsh.
Aye.
Uh, chair votes aye, motion passes, thank you. All right, next item. Christmas holiday closures request, it's on the next page.
Good morning, Joanna Piercey, Human Resources Director. Um, I've been asked to bring this forward with the Christmas holiday falling on a Thursday this year. Employees, um, were thinking that, uh, there wouldn't be much business on the twenty-fourth or the twenty-sixth, and, um, if you would consider closing on those days. Currently, we get four hours of holiday pay on Christmas Eve. Some places have gone to providing the full day off with holiday pay. And then, um, the twenty-sixth, I know employees would be willing to use vacation on that day.
So you're asking for four hours on Christmas Eve?
Yes, an additional four hours if we close the entire day. Right now, we close at noon.
And that's on Wednesday?
Yes.
I was hoping to come see you guys all about one-thirty.
Yeah.
Okay.
I was thinking.
Unlock my door.
Pretty excited about coming in.
So under current policy, just so we're, we're clarification, we close at noon on the twenty-fourth, uh, and the employee receives, uh, a half a day, four hours of holiday pay for that day. And then on Friday, we would reopen for ordinary business and close at noon?
Yes.
Correct.
Except Christmas Eve falls on a Wednesday this year. So Wednesday, we would close at noon, and then we're not gonna be here Thursday, cause it's Christmas Day. And then Friday, we come back and work till noon.
I thought that's what I just said.
Oh, I thought you said Thursday to Friday, I'm sorry.
No. And so.
Just clarifying what Neil said.
I thought I said Thursday to Friday. I'm so sorry.
Little foggy, okay, and you're asking for to be closed on the twenty-fourth, get paid all day, uh, uh, as holiday pay on the twenty-fourth? And then employee deference as whether they take, uh, vacation pay or take the day unpaid?
Correct, yes, and some people may have to come in if there is, um, like, certain things at the sheriff's office, you know, they have to take care of.
Of their, their work.
Of course, their deputies work, but I'm talking more about office staff, yes.
So we would be closed, but if people choose to work, they can work and not use their vacation, correct?
Yes, there may be some that are short on vacation and would like to work. If they have work to do, they can certainly do it.
Well, I don't think any of us was around, well, Dean was the last time Christmas fell on a Thursday.
He was probably the last thirty times.
Yeah. Well, I mean, I wasn't on the board, so I don't know how we treated it. We've been all over the board on these holidays.
Several counties, you can see the ones that, you know, have answered in different surveys that, um, the Recorder's Office has done, um, someone, uh, from Sergeant County did a survey. So those are just the people that responded, but several commissions just approved the, giving them the day off on the twenty-sixth.
Nobody answer phones Wednesday afternoon?
No, and that wouldn't be the case regardless, cause we get off at noon.
Any other comments or questions?
Remembering back to last time, I think we left it as it was and all, but.
Okay. Thoughts?
If you, I guess, I don't know which way you guys are leaning, but would it be option, if you're not leaning that way, for them to work all day Wednesday and not Friday?
Well, current policy says you pay for half, half a day on, on Christmas Eve, so they don't really gain anything unless we're gonna give, work them Wednesday afternoon and give them credit for Friday.
Correct, that's what I'm saying.
Is that what you just said? Well, I just, I just had to say that so that everybody.
How, how do you make up the forty?
I brought my coffee from home today, too.
You know, they, you come in all, we order at noon, cause they come in early on, and there is, how are you gonna make that up in Monday and Tuesday? For the four hours that it's on Friday that they get off?
I think he's saying you would use your four hours of holiday pay for Friday.
Yeah, I know, but.
Instead of Wednesday.
Right, now we let you go at, at noon on Fridays, because you come in earlier on the, the rest of the week, the four days.
They work nine hours.
But now, now we are not in here Wednesday and Thursday to put those extra hours in either.
They have to use an hour vacation, basically, for, if they don't make it up for each of those days.
Anything, thoughts, questions, motions? Anything, thoughts, questions, motions? I'll ask for a motion, if not, it will lack, uh, activity or whatever. Do we have a motion, second time? Third time, do we have a motion? Okay, proposal dies for any motion, thank you. Okay, next on the agenda, Rough Rider North Human Service Zone reappointments.
I'm on the board there and we have, uh, four that are, want to be reappointed for that on its position, so. I just recommend that we, uh, the commission needs to approve that and some of them, my position, term is up, the three-year term is myself and Travis Lyons and, and Dean Rummel and Dory Houck, who represents part of the Star County too.
Do you wanna make a motion to reappoint those for the new three-year term?
I so make those, that motion.
By Commissioner Franchuk, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
By Commissioner Claris, any other discussion, hearing none, all in favor, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, motion carries, thank you. Okay, next item on the agenda, Legislative Committee invite. We've been asked as a county to, uh, go to an interim Legislative Audit Policy and Review Committee, the short term is LAPRC, and to, uh, participate in their meeting next week. We are certainly gonna do that, I guess, what we were looking for was, uh, to authorize myself to be the spokesman that day. Um, just so that if someone asks, have you been authorized by your commission to appear, we have that, so I'd be looking for that emotion.
So moved.
Any question, okay.
Second.
Any, any other discussion, questions?
He did. Okay, he did.
That's fine.
Valid, valid.
Okay, hearing, no other discussion, all in favor of the motion, signified by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Pose same sign, motion carries. Twenty-twenty-six commission, commission meeting dates, somewhere in the packet.
We still got.
Do you wanna talk about Bernie's?
Yeah, but.
Oh, I thought you added it.
I thought you were.
Oh, okay, we can certainly do that, so go ahead Bernie, make your.
Okay, well, I mean.
Request.
There's been, I don't know if we need to request a special meeting or what do we need to do here, I would like to see more of an in-depth, um, training or on Karen's part to the public. Probably, uh, point, POS, not POS, whatever. PowerPoint. Explaining the tax process, what mills are, what, how taxes are, come about, um, probably have two examples of one with taxes, one with the exemption for your personal dwelling, um, and go through the audit, because the audit was from nineteen, none of us were here except Dean, I think might have been here yet. I mean, it, we've, we haven't raised our mills, I just think a nice presentation to explain everything would be good. Do we need a special meeting, I don't know if we need that, I know Karen's gonna be presenting at the Patriots' meeting, so could we just all be there? Call it, call it our meeting, because I think regardless of we, we call it or not, with Karen there, she representing us, we should all stand, be there with, with her anyway. I think we are a team, there's eight of us that are elected, that the weight of the county falls on our shoulders, we all work together, we all depend on each other. So even if we don't decide to call this a special meeting, I think we should all be there, even if we don't talk, just as, as we're there as a group to show support to what, what she's got to say and how she presents it, you know, because it might be a lot of good positive stuff, might be some negative negativity, we're more, you know, we're all standing there behind her, so.
Yeah.
However, you guys wanna take my ideas here, I would like to see something to explain, because in, in a month, what, in a month, our new tax statements are gonna come out and so there's gonna, all these questions are gonna come up again.
So I, I did ask, so Southwest Patriots did ask me to speak and I told them that I would talk at the sixteenth meeting because, um, most people should have their tax statements by then, and, um, then we can go over the different credits and stuff. I don't know how much I'll go into, I mean, what is a mill, I can always bring that paperwork, um, but I will say ta, our taxing system, it's not s- super easy to explain, I mean, it's like kinda purposely hard.
Then how do you, how do you understand it if it's not easy to explain?
Well, because I, I just do it, right?
I'm talking, I'm talking to general public.
Yeah.
I know, and, and so I'm not really sure how I would, I'm not sure how I'd quite address some of that.
Because I, I understand the basics of it, like I said earlier, but for somebody comes to me with questions, I'm not the person to answer those questions, it's gotta be somebody like you, just like I said. Legally, I know some legal stuff, but I'm not gonna say anything legal because we have a mandate for that. Budgeting stuff, I look at you as being somewhat to steer me in the right direction, you know, same, same goes with, with the law, so I mean, we all have our positions, but we all work together as a team, and so.
Are you, are you seeking to have others like understand the roles and responsibilities of what she's doing or what our current county?
I just the current county and, and.
Because.
Explain to them. I guess, I don't know what I want, I just want some clarification in sorts.
I understand the roles and responsibilities, I mean, there's tons of literature out there on YouTube or Google of, of roles and responsibilities of each individual within the, the government or city function.
I'm not talking about our roles, I'm just talking about taxes right now.
Oh, of the current?
Yes.
Okay.
But I'm just saying that we're all still a team, we should all still be there regardless if we call a special meeting or not, we should all still be at that meeting.
So when we come out with the, the, as a flyer, right, the tax flyer?
Yep, that'll go out with the tax statement.
You want something to be put together that would help better, I'd explain some of why is on it, okay.
So then you go through the flyer at that meeting, so people have questions, they can ask them.
Well, I think Karen's certainly capable of answering those questions, I don't know, uh, Jeff is here today, I don't know what, uh, he's, uh, thought was in his, uh, invite to Karen, but part of this had to do with the audit findings as well, right? And so, we're, th- these are two separate distinct conversations, audit findings and tax process, uh, tax processing. The tax processing part starts with valuations, it starts with mills, it, it starts.
Audit findings, and the question is, what have we done about it, where we come back to our taxing to explain to, to explain that we haven't raised our taxes, we've dropped our mills, we've, we've, we've dropped that, that surplus, supposedly surplus money by however many, many millions of dollars, we're working on, on this, we're being transparent compared to what the state auditor suggested we do is shuffle things around and put it into all these different accounts, we're being transparent, we're not hiding anything.
Yeah, and I, and I, I get that, I understand it, I think we are, you're right, I think we're extremely transparent, instead of just doing two budget hearings a year, we've done three.
Yes.
We've done four, and to, to go through those budgets so that, and I get a lot of phone calls on those, we try to, um, get them answered, have the conversations, but I guess I'm kind of, I mean, we all can show up at the Southwest, we could post it, notice it, that everybody's, um, going there. Um, that's fine, I just don't understand what the goal is, because not only, where the point I was going is when we talk about valuation and mills and the different political subs that make up your tax bill, uh, you know, so did, should, should the school board be there, should the fire district should be there?
I'm not saying that.
I'm just asking the question.
No, I understand that.
Because then you should also get into the appeal process, you should get into the abatement process, you know, all those kinda things. If you're fully gonna do taxing one-on-one, uh, you, you, you've got, it, it is a quite.
It is a big.
Comprehensive, uh, thing, and if, if this was originated because of the audit findings, then I think that's a total separate conversation.
It is all revolves around the audit fi, findings, there's no doubt about that.
And, and I know, uh, Neil is traveling to the committee in the invet, invitation, right?
Yes.
And that will all be documented as well, that conversation.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's live, you can, you can listen in, stream in live, it's taped.
He'll be in front of a committee?
Yes.
And answering questions?
Well, that's why I brought, I said, I didn't, I'm not requesting a special meeting, I'm asking for direction, for direction.
Mm-hmm, okay.
And so whatever.
And I, I plan on being at the Southwest Patriots' meeting to, you know, explain some of the taxing questions, you know, and go through the basics of maybe how some of it works, I know I've done that before, and it's just been a few years and there's different people that are interested. Um, as far as ex, I think the part that's tricky with the, the audit findings is trying to explain, um, what the commission's outlook is. I can do that to a certain extent, but I can't necessarily, you know, my job is more around the actual making the taxing work and getting your tax statements out and collecting the budgets, and then just showing you where everything is. But I'm not the decision maker on that part.
That's right.
And so, um, you know, and I can go through that with them, I think it's hard, like some people need to accept that, probably start with step one of, schools have their own authority, cities have their own authority.
That's the part that needs to be explored, yes.
And I was planning on going through all of that, just to kinda help clear that up, because it is confusing.
Yeah, and there'd be nothing wrong with one or more of us, uh, showing up at the meeting, Jeff has always said it's an open invite, uh, and whoever wants to, uh, appear or show, uh, can do that. Uh, I think he even, he even gives a couple of minutes to people who are running for office, uh, so that, that would be an option, or if there's questions.
Did you just volunteer me to show up?
Yeah, I did, actually.
I thought it was you and Paul.
So, I don't know if.
Well, like I said, I don't know if we need a special meeting, I just.
Yeah, I, I, I think if this was under the genesis of trying to work with Southwest Patriots, and maybe after that meeting, there could be a follow-up of, hey, this is what we saw, this is what we didn't see, make this suggestion, um, you know, and, and that could be part of the budgeting process for next year is to, uh, do that. I'm, I'm open to suggestion, I just go and, it's very complicated and I, you know, we can sit and, we talked about it at this meeting, it seems to be, a lot of it didn't resonate as well, so I'm, it, that would be my feedback. Mister, you're standing, Mr. Fitz, with a broken arm, so you wanna?
Oh.
Just because you were speculating a little bit, I, as to, as to motives, and of course, yes, I did ask Karen in for the exact reason she enumerated, um, to let the public know, I, you know, the, the mission of Southwest Patriots is to provide education in politics, information in politics, and then encourage participation in politics once people are educated and informed. Uh, and so having Karen in again to explain this is good, but it also, and she touched on this a little bit as well, I call it the trap of knowledge. You know, everybody here has gotten comfortable with the process because you do it every day. The people who are first-time home owners and get their statement, they never bothered to educate themselves on any of this stuff before because it didn't affect them directly, they thought, it did, but they weren't aware of it, you know, through their rent or whatever else they were paying. So there's always a new crop of people who need to be informed, always, and there's a current crop of people who maybe didn't understand it fully before or whatever else and are operating on only partial knowledge, so always updating is, is good. And like Karen said, there's only so much of this that she can answer, yes, it's a huge subject and you could go on for days on it, but to at least provide a comprehensive look at it, um, and I hadn't thought of a special meeting, this was Bernie's idea that he just brought up to me today, uh, you know, incorporating the rest of the, of the commission on it, I had just extended the invite to Karen, but you guys are always all welcome, and anybody who's running, of course, is also welcome to speak, uh, to their candidacy at the, at the end of every meeting, so if you guys would like to piggyback on this or in January, create a secondary follow-up meeting, I would be more than open to that, so. If you have any questions, I'll sure help answer.
What is your next meeting?
December sixteenth.
What is your next meeting?
Uh, the meeting with, uh, Karen is December sixteenth, Tuesday, at the Dickinson Eagles Club downtown here, uh, it starts at seven o'clock. Uh, and for anybody who's never been to one, uh, I try and keep them at about an hour and a half to two hours, because as you guys know, sitting through five hours of political meetings is not fun. So, so that's what to kind of expect.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, um, last, uh, item on the agenda is public comments not on the agenda, did we get any? Oh, see, that's what happens. We need to set our twenty-twenty-six commission meeting schedule, it was distributed.
This was just a tentative one based on what we've done the previous years, um, I kept the time at nine AM unless you guys would like to change that, kept the day of the week for Tuesdays unless it's indicated otherwise, um, I think there's only one that's indicated that it's not on a Tuesday. And, you know, there is a couple extra meetings in here, you know, obviously, in, if you look, January has two meetings, that second meeting in January is budget amendment meeting, um, then we have two meetings in July, that second meeting in July is usually when we talk about the preliminary budget objectives. Um, September fifteenth, that's when our hearing is for, for our budget, and, um, October twentieth, we have to have because of the delinquent properties. Um, and then the end of December meeting is our last meeting, um, that we have every year because we need to pay those bills in, in the, in the year. So the commission is welcome if they have something separate, I know it was brought up of maybe moving the park board. Um, I don't know if the commission, if that's something that they wanna do, these are all things that you guys get to decide.
Well, I think the format that we got now seems to work, and it's, it's kinda smoothed out quite a bit. Uh, the dates all look good, the November, November fifth is the only one that's off of a, off of a Tuesday, so it looks like a good schedule.
Okay, any other comments? Okay, I would move or, uh, ask for, uh, us to formalize this.
Make a motion to approve it.
Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner White, can I get a second?
No second.
By Commissioner Franchuk, any other discussion, hearing none, all in favor, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, motion carries. Now, final item on the agenda, other public comments not on the agenda, did we get any cards? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
But can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor, signify, saying aye. Pose same sign, motion carries, thank you, we are adjourned.
Yep.